Good morning, everyone. My name is Rob Van Haddelis. I'm counsel to the Division of Community Services. The Department of State is conducting this hearing on the Community Services Block Grant State Plan for their 2024-2025 federal fiscal years. The Department of State published a notice of the hearing in the state register on May 31st, 2023, posted a notice on its website, and regularly emailed stakeholders to remind them of today's hearing. The Department of State posted a draft of the state plan on its website and began accepting comments on the draft on June 1st. The public comment period will continue through this public hearing and end at the close of business on July 14th. Today's hearing is occurring at notice locations in Albany, New York City, and Buffalo. The public also has the option of attending virtually. Several speakers have submitted forms indicating a desire to speak at today's hearing. Testimony will be limited to 10 minutes. The Department of State has sought to schedule the order of speakers in accordance with their desired times. After we've heard from each scheduled speaker, we will ask if there's anyone, any person in attendance at any of the physical locations or online who wish to speak. We ask that speakers identify themselves, spell their names, and identify whether they are appearing on behalf of any organization before beginning their testimony. Ben?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for your participation in your state's public hearing regarding the New York State 2024-2025 Community Services Block Grant State application that is due on September 1st. To acknowledge those who have submitted testimony and call upon this morning's participants who will offer testimony, I want to introduce and thank Nikki Badistoni, the Deputy Director of the Division of Community Services, for her hard work and diligence in the development of our state plan. Nikki?
Good morning, everyone. This is Nikki Badistoni. Just to acknowledge on record that we did receive some public comments from Dennis Wilson, Executive Director from Polmat Community Action Agency, Tina Zerbian, Chief Executive Officer from Connecting Communities in Action, Laura Rossman, Chief Executive Officer from Pro Action of Stupid and Yates, Leslie Gooch-Crispin, Executive Director of Allegheny County Community Opportunities Rural Development, Maureen Abbott, Executive Director of Tioga Opportunities, and Erin Wicks, Vice President for Planning and Evaluation from Action for a Better Community. Okay. And then in person, we have four testimonies for our presentation, and as counsel said, we'll ask at the end of the presentations if there's any others. So we'll start in our New York City office with Natalia Alejandra Valera. We'll come back to Natalia. We'll go ahead and start with Jacqui Orr, Chief Executive Director for New York State Community Action Association.
Great. You want me to move on? All right. Great. Thank you, Nikki. My name is Jacqueline Orr. That's spelled J-A-C-Q-U-E-L-I-N-E. My last name O-R-R. I represent the New York State Community Action Association called NISC for short. I am the CEO of NISC, and I thank you for this opportunity to provide feedback on the Department of State Division of Community Services 2024-2025 CSBG State Application and Plan. I have submitted my comments, my written comments via email. I brought copies with me today, so these will, my verbal comments will be a little bit shorter than my written comments. NISC is a nonprofit association representing the 47 community action agencies serving all 62 counties in the state. As the Community Action Association in New York, NISC is the direct recipient of CSBG discretionary funds through the New York State Department of State Division of Community Services. These funds support training and technical assistance, allowing NISC to facilitate the network's training, information sharing, peer mentoring, leadership development, and collaborative initiatives. NISC supports the development and capacity building opportunities for the network such as community practices and peer-led groups. NISC also develops and distributes a comprehensive range of resource materials, including the Annual Poverty Report, the Community Action Resource Guide, the annual report, and monthly newsletters. Since 2011, NISC has also been designated as the lead agency in the Federal Region II Regional Performance and Innovation Consortium, RPIC, which is a project of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to coordinate training and technical assistance, support best practices, and enhance capacity and innovation in the community action agencies and state associations in New York, New Jersey, and Puerto Rico. We would like to recognize the Department of State and Division of Community Services for their support and advocacy for community action. We thank Secretary of State Robert Rodriguez for his leadership and recognition of the essential work of community action agencies and their local communities. We appreciate Zoila Di Castillo, the Deputy Secretary of State for Economic Opportunity. She joined us at NISC's conference last year, and she was engaged, she had the opportunity to engage with CAA staff, and we really appreciated her time. Director Emmanuel Manny Rosa and his staff have consistently exhibited their support and dedication to community action agencies, leading to understand the services and programs established to meet the needs of families. It has been a pleasure for me to work directly with Manny. He has listened to the network to eliminate administrative problems and has been instrumental in making changes to benefit the community action agencies. He recognizes the challenges while also celebrating the network's successes. So I have comments that directly respond to the CSBG management plan. So Section 3, State Plan Development and Statewide Goals. The network appreciates the process of developing this CSBG state plan. DOS provided the community an opportunity to offer insights into the plan's development, not just a chance, not just a chance to comment on an already developed plan. In partnership with NISC, a work group of DOS and CAA representatives met regularly to review the current plan and make suggestions for developing this plan. The network recommends that this model of plan development and review continue. Within the state's goals, Goal 5 notes that DOS will continue to implement a pilot database-driven solution aimed at streamlining administrative documents and processes to reduce redundancies for CSBG state staff and CSBG eligible entities. While the network appreciates DOS's intent to reduce people work and administrative redundancies for the CAAs, eliciting specific feedback from the network and gathering information about processes and databases currently in use would have helped to determine the most effective and efficient method to provide maximum benefit to the network. Given that this new database is part of an 18-month pilot, it is unclear what will happen at the end of the 18 months, whether this database will be maintained or whether the network will have a new system in which to learn. Section 7, State Use of Funds. NISC is pleased that DOS has included discretionary dollars to assist community action agencies in meeting areas of compliance in the organizational standards, making improvement in management oversight, and enhancing agency infrastructure. These discretionary capacity building dollars will assist agencies that need additional support. Under use of discretionary funds, NISC suggests that DOS establish a process for determining the use of discretionary dollars. It is recommended that DOS utilize the CSBG Advisory Committee and the Community Action Network to a greater extent to obtain information about community needs so discretionary funds can be directed to priority needs, innovative pilots, and the expansion of best practices and evidence-based programming. We are pleased that DOS has plans to focus discretionary funds on fatherhood initiatives. Currently in New York, there is no statewide commitment to fatherhood. DOS and the network can begin to fill this void using CSBG discretionary funds with the potential to leverage leverage these funds to traditional funding. We are also pleased that social equity is an area of focus for discretionary funding as community action agencies are addressing and advancing social justice in their organizations and communities. The CAA network strongly encourages the state to offer discretionary funds only within the Community Action Network. These funds are intended to be used by the federally designated Anti-Poverty Network. If discretionary funds are major agencies out of the network, NISC requests that those grantees be held to the same standards as community action agencies. This would include ensuring that funded projects are driven by needs identified and community needs assessments, programs are outcome-focused, and establish mechanism for low-income customer input. In any other network RFA process, we also recommend that DOS consider a rating system whereby community action agencies are awarded points that recognize their ability to meet both the national CSBG organizational standards and state standards. In Section 8, State Training and Technical Assistance, excuse me. The statewide network of community action agencies provides great value and ongoing training and technical assistance. NISC, working in collaboration with DOS, provides the network with relevant and timely training and technical assistance. NISC is pleased to have received discretionary funding for many years and is included in the current draft plan. We encourage DOS to continue supporting NISC's efforts to deliver a wide range of training, technical assistance, and statewide coordination and communication to enhance and support the Community Action Network. Section 9, State Linkages and Communication. NISC encourages DOS to develop deeper linkages and partnerships with other state agencies. One of the core functions of a CSBG state office, as indicated in the CSBG accountability measures, is to maintain and create linkages within the state government to ensure the effective delivery of services to low-income people and communities. The draft state plan notes that the Division of Community Services participates in the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act inter-agency team. NISC suggests that DOS share progress and outcomes associated with this group with the larger Community Action Network. DOS must continue to develop and maintain partnerships with other state agencies, such as the Office of Mental Health, Office of Children and Family Services, Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance, and the Council on Children and Families. Partnerships with these agencies could considerably advance the state's commitment to statewide initiatives and ensure that the well-established CSBG network is considered a part of any new state initiatives focusing on factors related to poverty. NISC will be pleased to work with DOS to develop, maintain, and grow statewide, state-level partnerships and linkages. Section 10, Monitoring, Corrective Action, and Fiscal Controls: the State Triennial Assessment Review, known as the STAR. DOS and NISC created a work group in 2022 to review and discuss DOS's current monitoring framework and practices, which provided a valuable opportunity to discuss monitoring holistically. DOS has noted that the STAR has replaced the triennial review for accountability for compliance with standards known as the TRACs. The STAR will include both the CSBG national organizational standards and state standards. Neither the monitoring work group members nor the network has seen a draft of the STAR and therefore have been unable to offer comments. Given that the program and fiscal monitoring process and guidelines indicate that the final STAR score will be used to inform the number of monitoring visits for the next three years for each eligible entity, the STAR should be available for feedback by the network during this open comment period. NISC does support the effort DOS is making to reduce redundancies and the number of monitoring visits to CAAs while also increasing technical assistance. Excuse me. The monitoring approach maintains consistent monitoring and oversight of community action agencies while also providing extensive support to agencies where additional guidance and technical assistance is necessary. Section 12, Individual and Community Income Eligibility Requirements. NISC strongly supports the language proposed in Item 121A. If federal legislation action permits a state to adopt a percentage of poverty higher than 125%, then DOS shall select the highest percentage of poverty permissible as a criterion for eligibility. The network welcomes DOS's DCS's comments to allow local CAAs to serve the broadest population possible, subject to legislative requirements. And that was commitment, not comments. And then my final is that we look forward to supporting the network's collaboration with DOS and developing partnerships on mutual respect, trust, and transparency to benefit the Community Action Network in New York, and thank you for this opportunity to comment on the draft plan.
Thank you, Jacqui. We'll move to Natalia Alejandra Valera in our New York City office. Is she available?
Hi. Good morning. Thank you so much. I'm sorry for being late. I just wanted to thank the advisory committee and for the opportunity to comment on this plan. You know, we wanted to provide a little bit more about just kind of the work that we're able to do under this grant and the importance of consistent funding in the thought process as the, as you know, you take in comments about your grantees. So I just wanted to say thank you again. We're pleased to submit this testimony to the New York State Division of Community Services Advisory Council on the subject of the critical need to ensure adequate and consistent resources to addressing devastating exploitation and harm experienced by low-paid workers throughout New York State. We focus a lot of our work on low-paid workers, and that is what we are so grateful for, the CSBG grant money that always assists us in reaching out to the community. So Make the Road New York is a not-for-profit, community-based organization with over 25,000 low-income members dedicated to building the power of immigrant and working-class communities to achieve dignity and justice through organizing policy innovation, transformative education, and survival services. We have five community centers across New York in Queens, Brooklyn, Staten Island, White Plains, and Brentwood, and provide a broader way of support to thousands of New Yorkers every year. Our workplace justice legal team represents hundreds of workers each year in cases to enforce their workplace rights and provides community rights education that reaches thousands more. As a longtime recipient of the CSBG funding, Make the Road New York has assisted scores of low-paid workers. Over the last five years alone, we've opened well over 700 cases, and this also assists, this does not include the person's benefit per cases. Thanks to this crucial funding, Make the Road New York and other legal services and community-based organizations have helped workers recover millions of dollars in stolen wages from their employers, fight sexual harassment and other forms of discrimination, protect their right to paid leave, and safeguard their right to protest violations free of retaliation. Limited resources for workers' rights enforcement and outreach means that we can reach only a fraction of the workers who need help. The need for employment legal services has never been more urgent, especially in the wake of COVID-19 pandemic. The state must sustain, if not increase, funding for employment-related civil legal services for low-wage immigrant workers in addition to funding for outreach and organizing to these workers. So just to give you a coloring of how our work impacts the state of New York, wage theft is rampant in the state and throughout the state's economy in construction, restaurants, warehouses, delivery, cleaning, domestic work, factories, where despite strong laws on the books, enforcement has simply not been robust enough to ensure that workers are getting the benefit of higher wages and benefit standards that the city and state have passed in recent years. Every year, an estimated 2.1 million New Yorkers are victims of wage theft, robbed at $3.2 billion in wages and benefits that they are owed. And in New York City alone, low-road employers steal nearly $1 billion per year from low-wage workers, including by paying workers less than the minimum wage, violating prevailing wage requirements, and not paying, not paying non-exempt employees time and a half or overtime hours, stealing tips, requiring off-the-clock work before and or after the work's shift without pay, and making illegal deductions from pay, among others. Even seemingly small violations quickly add up and amount to thousands of dollars stolen from the workers' pockets. Low-paid workers are even more vulnerable to workplace violations and face much higher barriers to enforcing their rights. We wanted to just provide the advisory council a story about our workers. To give just one example of the difficulties our clients face, Make the Road New York represented 12 restaurant workers who were, who worked as waiters, bussers, and in the kitchen at an upscale Italian restaurant in Staten Island, and suffered egregious wage theft and other abuse. Many of the waiters were not paid any wages at all and for several years and only earned the tips left by customers. Later, they were paid just $25 for the whole lunch shift and $50 per dinner shift. Despite regularly working up to 14 hours a day and 78 hours a week, the workers never received any overtime pay. Indeed, this case came to us from the New York State Department of Labor. After one of our clients filed a complaint for retaliation with the New York State DOL in 2018, the DOL began investigating. They were concerned about the well-being of the workers and connected them with Make the Road New York. We took the case and began meeting with a few of the workers. The boss continued to harass the workers and threaten them about cooperating with the DOL investigation. Initially, the DOL flagged the case for criminal investigation by the Richmond County DA's office. The DA's office met and interviewed several of our clients. One of our clients was scheduled to appear in front of the judge with the DA's office in March 2020 to secure a search warrant for the restaurant's records, but the appearance was canceled when COVID hit, and the DA's office and courts closed. By the time they reopened, our clients had left their jobs at the restaurant, and the DA was unable to secure new corroborating witnesses. At the end of 2020, we filed a lawsuit in federal court against the restaurant and its owners to recover the unpaid wages, and 12 workers joined the case. After suffering numerous delays to COVID, to COVID, and protracted discovery disputes when the restaurant failed to produce accurate records, the restaurant filed for bankruptcy in June 2022, yet again delaying our client's recovery. Finally, after participating in a bankruptcy court ordered mediation in August 2022, our clients reached a settlement agreement. The clients received their first settlement checks, representing only part of the wages they were legally entitled to, and in May 2023, nearly five years after our brave client went to the DOL to report that he had been fired for asking to receive his lawfully earned wages, harrowing client journeys such as this often, sorry. Such as these are not uncommon and demonstrate the need for legal services providers to be able to commit year after year to seeking justice for exploited workers. And a national report titled "The Broken Laws" provided that those workers who complained about a workplace issue or attempted to form a union in the previous 12 months, 47% experience employer threats to fire, to fire workers or call immigration authorities, and the vast majority of workers who experience wage theft do not file claims to recover stolen wages. All of this to say that we, the current public enforcement scheme is simply insufficient to address the scope of violations, and the New York State DOL does not have enough resources to promptly investigate the complaints that come into the agency, let alone enforce state employment laws in workplaces where workers are too scared to report violations. The pandemic has added to enforcement problems as court closings and New York State DOL backlogs delayed cases by months or even years, and we've seen these same issues plague other worker agencies, such as the New York City Human Rights Commission. In this past several years, New York has taken to lead worker protections. However, the inability to enforce is a problem, and private enforcement addresses, nor can private enforcement address the scope of violations. Private attorneys are reluctant to represent workers whose claims are not worth enough to cover the cost they will incur in bringing the case. Many low-wage workers cannot find a law firm to help them and face long waits while they attempt to file complaints at government agencies. So state funding for civil legal services is necessary and extremely important and crucial for it to be consistent, if not raised, if possible, to fill the gap in labor standards enforcement. Make the Road New York and other community worker centers and legal service organizations fill the gap in services for low-paid workers. We're able to do this primarily through state and local funding, and while New York City has devoted some resources to programs such as Low Wage Worker Initiative, they do not meet the need in New York City, and we need comparable investments statewide for legal services in areas with even fewer, if any, legal services available for low-paid workers. Each year, Make the Road New York helps hundreds of low-paid workers, the overwhelming majority who are people of color, access justice so that they can enforce their rights. We urge the state to meet the needs of low-paid workers and fund legal services and outreach. To meet the needs of low-paid workers and increase services, our organization hired new attorneys and legal staff and took on cases that will last well past the end of this fiscal year, like the example we applied of our, we spoke about our other clients. Without ongoing and robust, sustainable funding, our organization's ability to continue to effectively address the employment-related legal needs of the state, the state's low-paid essential workers, and retain, hire, new staff for this crucial work is in jeopardy. Staying dedicated to funding for low-paid workers in need of employment-related civil legal services is critical to New York City's economy and the well-being of its most essential workers. We respectfully request that the state increase funding for legal services and outreach for low-paid workers to support a robust network of community-based organizations, legal providers to train, support, and represent workers in litigation and administrative proceedings. We thank you for the opportunity to present this testimony and look forward to working with the state to protect workers' rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalia. Joining us virtually, we'll move to Amy Turner, Executive Director of Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency. You can unmute yourself, Amy, and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for this opportunity this morning to provide this testimony about Community Services Block Grant Program and the impact it has on our communities across New York State. My name's Amy Turner. That's A-M-Y-T-U-R-N-E-R. I'm the Executive Director of the Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency. I'm also a current board member with the New York State Community Action Association, affectionately known as NISC. I'm a member of the Equity and Economic Mobility Commission and the National Head Start Task Force, both coordinated by the National Community Action Partnership. To start with, on behalf of our agency, I want to acknowledge Emmanuel Rosa, the Director of the Division of Community Services, and his team. They've been a real pleasure to work with. They're very active in our network and truly committed to helping to provide the best opportunities possible to low-income families. We do appreciate that hard work and passion for community action. The Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency, just to give you a little background, like most, provide a variety of services to low-income people in Anida and Herkimer Counties, which includes the city of Utica. We have an annual operating budget of approximately $18 million, and we employ 250-plus, when we're fully staffed, full-time employees, at 24 different sites throughout our two-county area. We've been able to use our CSBG program funds to create a central intake process and a model of service integration for all of our families. This enables our families that we are here for in our service area, real easy access to our resources and other opportunities in the community, and also allows us to gather the data we need to show our outcomes. The CSBG funding, as you all know, defines who we are as a community action agency. It sets our mission to help people living in poverty as a whole agency. Organizational standards were developed to ensure that the entire agency performs at a level that will produce the required results. We use our CSBG funding for capacity building for the whole agency, not just CSBG-funded staff. In fact, because of our integration, we have very few staff funded completely by CSBG. Our services are integrated, and our funding is as well. We should be allowed to use CSBG to support any activity the agency needs related to the org's standards. All of our work is grounded in equity and a sense of belonging. It's very important that grantees have a significant role in the development of this management plan, and we are so very pleased at the efforts of the Department of State to include eligible entities in this process. This is very important to the success of the program and the grantees. As you all know, the network has over 50 years of experience creating and shaping programs for their local communities, and they should be actively involved. We encourage Department of State to continue these efforts to solicit meaningful feedback on a regular basis from the grantees. We also would like to commend New York State for their objective to use the higher threshold allowed for income eligibility of 200% of the federal poverty guidelines. If our federal government also decides that's a good thing to do, that's on a side note. Goal 5, kind of a redundancy of NISC's comments and notes that DOS will continue to implement a pilot database-driven solution aimed at streamlining administrative documents and processes, and we appreciate this effort. And we're, but we are curious about the new database and whether that will, at the end of the 18-month pilot, be maintained, or we will have to learn a new system. We strongly, at MVCAA, recommend discretionary funding only be available to existing CSBG-eligible entities, resulting in an amendment to the Contract of Selective. New York's most vulnerable families will be best served by maintaining and growing the existing network of eligible entities. As we know, these community action agencies have been in existence for several years, and we are in touch with the changing needs of our local communities. Offering CSBG funding to other CBOs in our communities has created unnecessary competition locally with our established partners. Biding these resources directly to the eligible entities would result in more effective outcomes. There are too many priorities listed as discretionary funding, and these should be prioritized to maximize impact. The description of services and activities in the section should be expanded a little bit to allow for more innovative pilots, expansion of best practice, and evidence-based program, programming, excuse me, or the spread and scaling program, programming, excuse me, or the spread and scaling up of solutions to end poverty. These concepts should be generated by the Community Action Network in an ongoing dialogue with the Department of State and not limited to the few activities listed in the plan. However, once again, these resources should only be available to CSBG-eligible grantees. We support the plan in allowing entities to carry over unexpended funds into the next year for program purposes. This flexibility provides a level of administrative management not available with many other funding sources, or any, I think. Our agency is very supportive of the plan's intent to continue working with the New York State Community Action Association. The association provides us valuable support, training, and technical assistance to the network of agencies throughout New York State. Their website provides agencies with the ability to access resources quickly and easily. NISC provides the network with relevant grant announcements, legislation that affects our programs, and other pertinent information. In addition, the association offers regular professional development opportunities to all staff and board members. DOS and DCS has noted that the State Triennial Assessment Review STAR has replaced the triennial review for accountability for compliance with standards TRACS. The STAR will include both the CSBG national organizational standards and state standards. Neither the monitoring workgroup members, as Jackie said on behalf of NISC, nor the network has seen a draft of the STAR, and therefore we've been unable to offer comments. Given that the program and fiscal monitoring process and guidelines indicate that the final STAR score will be used to inform the number of monitoring visits for the next three years, for each eligible entity, the STAR should be available for feedback by the network during this open comment period. We would also please ask for you to consider removing the MWBE requirement from our CSBG contracts. This is federal funding that would not otherwise be subject to this requirement in other states. Although we support the intent of the requirement, it is especially burdensome to upstate grantees where qualified MWBE businesses are not readily available. We encourage the Department of State to continue their work on developing strong partners with other state agencies to promote the strength of the Community Action Network's service delivery system and community engagement initiatives. It would be amazing if, when other funding became available, similar to what an EXPREE was released by the state, specifically targeted to address poverty, that it would be distributed through the Community Action Network, the federally designated anti-poverty network in New York State. In closing, I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to the Secretary of State and the staff for their commitment to this valuable program and their support to community action agencies. We are fortunate in New York to have such outstanding leadership that stays on the cutting edge of new initiatives and ensures the effective and successful implementation of the CSBG program. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Amy. We have one more testimony virtually. Patricia Demma, Foster Grandparent Director for Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency. You'd like to unmute yourself and begin with your testimony.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you. Hi, my name is Patty Demma, P-A-T-T-I-D-E-M-M-A. So, hi, my name is Patty Demma, and I'm the Foster Grandparent Director for Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency. I would like to share my story and the impact community action has had on me professionally and personally. When the recession hit in 2009, my family and I were experiencing a very difficult time. My husband had lost his job. My son was hit by a car, and we had a lot of medical bills that we couldn't pay. It was such a trying time, we were losing the ability to pay for basic needs and care for our family. Neither my husband nor I had struggled like this in the past. I was making a minimal hourly wage at a playground. We had no benefits, and we could not even make it paycheck to paycheck. I was aware of government programs and signed our family up for EBT, the pre-student lunch program, HEAT, and any other financial support we could find. In 2013, I applied to work for Community Action. And the day that I received the phone call that I was selected, I was excited, but I had no idea how my life would change. Community action is reliant on CSBG funds to help people out of poverty, and I am one of those people. My first fall of community action was a family support specialist. I received benefits, a fair wage, and my very first retirement plan. I began to see the future differently. I took advantage of the professional development and training offered to advance my knowledge about community action. I began to understand how the CSBG helps families, children, and the community. Our Mohawk Valley community relies on community action programs to help with health, education, housing, and many more needs. I became a proud employee of an important community resource. In 2016, I applied for a promotion, and I was selected to be the manager of the family support specialists. I again used the available training opportunities and programs that NISC, New York State Community Action Agency, offered to learn best practices and to learn leadership skills. I participated in the Emerging Leaders Institute, ELI. I began to find skills and confidence that I didn't know I had. Community action gave me hope for the future and the desire to work hard. The programs I worked for helped the community, and as I helped others, my professional abilities and self-esteem grew. I was learning all about the programs that an agency like ours provides, proud to be part of an agency that helps prenatal moms, children needing child quality childcare, runaway and homeless youth, the unemployed, the homeless, seniors, and anyone that walks through the door. Community action treats everyone with respect and dignity, and I am a better person for working here. Community action builds and encourages leaders. It is always encouraged for internal staff to apply for open positions. I was encouraged to apply for a promotion in 2019 to become a program director. I was chosen to be the Foster Grandparent Program Director. This program places senior volunteers in school settings to improve social and emotional and educational growth of the students and the youth in our community. I can see firsthand how the community action programs work in tandem to support each other and the clients using our programs. With each step in my career, our family became more self-sufficient, and I began to see my retirement grow. Through professional development opportunities offered from the National Community Action Network, I continued to learn. I'm proud to say that I am now a CCAP, a Certified Community Action Professional, dedicated to the mission of helping others out of poverty. I believe here we have about 300 employees. I try to get to know every one of them. These are the most caring, empathetic, compassionate, and confidential people you will ever meet. Community action is helping every generation, every day, in so many ways. Our community feels seen and heard by community action. I am grateful for the Community Services Block Grant and how it changes people's lives, improves communities, and makes America a better place to live. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Patricia. That concludes the, those who have submitted testimony, and I'll turn it over to our director. Oh, is there anybody else in the Buffalo office, New York City office, or virtually that would like to present testimony?
No one in Buffalo.
No one in New York City.
I'm sorry, who was up to talk?
Is there anybody online that would like to participate this night in either New York or Buffalo office? I think the silence is the answer. Okay, so let me thank everybody again as we conclude the hearing. I want to thank everybody for their testimony, recommendations, and ideas as to how to make this a better plan for New York State. On behalf of Secretary of State Robert Rodriguez, Deputy Secretary Zoyla Castillo, I wish to reiterate and underscore our commitment to the partnership and collaboration with the New York State Network of Community Action Agencies. Your hard work and dedication offer hope and assistance to our communities, as we just heard, and those who need a helping hand and encouragement to deal with the challenges of poverty and move toward a stronger financial position. Our state plan underscores our work and commitment to the CSBG mission. There are never enough words to truly express the gratitude and recognition that should be given to our community action agencies. I want to thank Jackie O and the NISC, the New York State Community Action Association, workgroup participants Nancy Turo, Amy Turner, Tina Servian, Matt Bull, Mike Bobbitt, Jeff Schiff, and Charlie Quinn for their recommendations and thoughtfulness in assisting us with the development of this plan. Additionally, I want to thank the CSBG Advisory Council, led by Dennis Wilson, Dan Maskin, and Tina Servian, for their support and counsel on how we can enhance this plan and the services funded by CSBG. Thank you to DCS and DOS staff, including our Council of Alcandabas, Jen Gallo, Mindy Van Oostem, Catherine Traynor of DOS Fiscal Bureau, the DCS staff, Nikki Galvestoni, Nancy Paul, Amy Colas, Sarah Eisenmixon, and all of our colleagues and team at the Division of Community Services. The state plan is a work in progress, and this morning's testimony will help improve the financial product, the final product, I'm sorry. We look forward to sharing the plan with our stakeholders and the work of serving our communities ahead. Thank you, and have a great day for everybody still listening. Take care, everybody. Thank you. That concludes it, yes? That concludes the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah?